All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open this regular meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectment for Tuesday, August 20, 2019. Would you like to please rise, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is correspondence, and I will note that we have, the selectmen have a copy of a letter from Bill Hillman. Thank you. It was received earlier today. No other late correspondence there? Okay. Moving on to public comments. Before I open up the floor for public comments, I want to repeat a couple of things I mentioned last time. Number one, as before, please be respectful. We're here to, obviously, the crowd is here tonight to see what we're going to decide about a policy issue, so I would ask that we not reference individuals, you know, how we got here, we all know what that story is. Also, once the public comment is closed, there will be no further public comment, so we're not going to have any back-and-forth debate. This is at a point where the selectmen have to make a decision, and we will, I believe, tonight. I don't foresee any other reason to table the issue, but we just ask for your forbearance on that. One other comment, one other request that I have, which is more of a personal one. I've listened to a lot of, actually, two other comments. I've listened to a lot of the comments that were spoken at the other meetings, I've read some letters that were published, and it's, I noted a very interesting thing. The people who've spoken in the past, the people who have written extensively on this, are very, very open to other religions besides Christianity when we're talking about use of public space. I have unfortunately heard some comments that are borderline disparaging against others. And I want to point out something. The U.S. Constitution does not require people to be believers in order to exercise their constitutional rights. Those rights extend to everyone. And I know that nobody would say anything disparaging about another person's religion. And I would ask you to treat people who are non-believers or people who believe differently with exactly the same respect. If you could do that, I think that that's the way we should go. We really can't judge them, we shouldn't. I've heard people say, "Wow, they don't believe in anything, therefore, they shouldn't be able to display during the holiday season." I certainly would not try to determine what a person believes or not believes. They are our neighbors, they pay taxes to this town just like everybody else, they celebrate holidays in their own way, they may be non-believers, they may believe in something that just doesn't include organized religion. So I would just ask that you respect that point of view as well, because they do have rights under the First Amendment, just like everybody else. So, I thank you for listening to that, and with that, I would open the floor for public comments. And as usual, please state your name and address for the record, and so we can capture that.
Hi.
You stood up, so I think you want to be first, right?
Okay. Bill Hillman, 86, Walden Hill Road. I brought a mini menorah, for anyone who hasn't seen one, that's what it looks like, and some 62 people have donated $2,500 for a menorah that has been purchased, roughly about $700 has been spent. And I very much would like to add the light of Hanukkah to the existing light that comes from the holiday tree, the Christmas tree, the nativity. Some members and volunteers who supported the nativity have been incredibly generous in their donations in support for adding the menorah to the display. And we know from last year that there are people who don't have a religious preference or have no belief in a deity, who want to and should have the right to put up a nice holiday display wishing the rest of us happy holidays. It's all positive. The First Amendment, while it protects against the establishment of a religion, the second part of that also says, "Nor prohibit the free exercise thereof." So my view in this is that we have a wonderful holiday tradition that has gone on for decades. I would like to add to that. I brought, in addition to my mini menorah, something which I would love to be able to give out, a number of these, to people who show up to a first night event, or really to the parents, it's got some sharp edges, so this is not something to hand to the kids. And also, not wooden, but I'd love to give out plastic dringles, like I've done when my daughter was attending Rockwell. So, so these are all positive things, but I really can't plan for a first night event unless the Board of Selectment tonight demonstrates the courage to say, "We believe that the people of Bethel will be positive, and all comers who want to have a holiday winter display should have their place in P.T. Barnum. The menorah, which I've already purchased, who, to help with some people in this room, is six feet tall, six feet wide, and two inches deep. I think that comes to something like one square foot, and the only requirement it has is to be within distance of an electric plug, because the lights, the LED lights, are all automated. Once you turn it on for the first night, it's perfectly happy cycling, turning on the next light, the next light, and the next light the next day. With the exception of a couple of individuals who prefer to have a religious-themed ceremony at United's Jewish Center, virtually all of the feedback I've gotten has been very positive, including for members of my own congregation, which is in Newtown. So, just to close, I know other people may want to have something to speak. I truly hope to be able to move from this meeting to being able to form a committee of a few people to be able to have a first night of Hanukkah celebration, which will be Sunday night, December 22. Whether or not I'm able to do something nice, or find a Plan B or Plan C, is kind of up to the three of you, and I hope, again, that you demonstrate the courage to trust the people of Bethel to have nice displays. And our winter festival, that's sponsored by the Bethel Chamber of Commerce, will be a fantastic success, and this year with the addition of a menorah. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'm going to open it for everybody. I still believe, after hearing all of my best to go tonight, I still believe in what I said the other night, it needs to be a positive town, it needs to be positive individuals. The atheist banner was a positive thing, to the neighbors, "Happy Holidays" was positive, and I think going to menorah will be positive for the town, positive for the people of Bethel, and inclusive in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Cynthia McCordy, the 19th Al-Javid. My issue is that, whether it's positive or negative, I think that we're not really firmly in the camp of religion or culture, and I think we are more in the area of culture when we're talking of a tradition, when we're talking about the holiday displays. So, I spoke at the very first meeting, and I've been following this, and it just seems that, so, Christmas is in December, generally celebrated, December 25. Hanukkah is always in December, has their own celebration, I mean, maybe there are people who celebrate the winter solstice. I just don't know, I can't find out, what winter holiday the atheists are representing unless they're just co-opting a holiday and want to put their sign up. So why couldn't anybody put a sign up? Atheists, because we don't single them out, because if they're non-believable, okay, then let's not single them out. In February, there's the Day of a Thousand Buddhas, so they don't want to put up a Christmas display, I haven't heard that. I haven't heard the Chinese New Year, that they want to put up a Christmas display or a winter display. I guess what I'm saying is, our tradition, from the very beginning of this country, and yes, we have many other things that come into view, but if you were saying, you know, the positivity of the people, that also, I think, would include the will of the people, and, you know, it's, you know, you can say popular vote, I mean, I think if a petition was circulated tomorrow to have a special town meeting to actually vote on this issue, you would have minor signatures unique like that, and then you would be in a special town meeting, and then you could or you could not affect the will of the people. So I think this is like, has become a tempest in a teapot. I think it's become way more, there's way more weight to this than it needs to be had, and it's almost like there are other ways to deal with this, rather than a group, and again, I don't care if they believe or don't believe, but a group to come in and literally, you know, suck the joy out of Christmas, it doesn't make any sense to me. The fact that the creches will live forever, it's a tradition, it's a very well-established holiday, Hanukkah, I just don't get the holiday aspect, or even the cultural aspect, of what's being promoted in terms of signage. And I think if you open it up to a lottery, you are opening up Pandora's Box, you don't know what's going to come out of that hat. So I think that this is a very, very, you are in a precipice right now, selectmen, and I just want to put that out there, you could be walking into a very dark place. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments? All right, none. To move on, we need to review the minutes of the regular meeting of August 6, and if you had a chance to look at those carefully, because that was the one where the computer crashed, so there's no video of that, so I'd like to watch your base of this. Any comments, questions, or those in favor, if you have a say on it?
Aye.
Thank you, Rich. First Walkman's report. There's not a lot going on right now, so I want to take a moment to address one other point before we get into the consideration of the religious holiday. And I'm glad the speaker, my speaker, brought this up. We have this, after, let me review something that I talked about at the last meeting. This issue goes back 10 years with me, it probably goes back with other First Selectmen in authority. I have had extensive conversations with the town attorney as well as other attorneys. I have had extensive conversations with other towns. This is truly a dichotomy. I read an editorial piece the other day that said, "Well, we really want the selectmen to respect the tradition, we want that to stay, but we don't want anything on the green that might say, 'say nothing.'" And the thing that I am really trying to help people understand is, there's no in-between. There is no middle ground, there's no third option. It's either no, or it's yes. And we can't go to another citizen, who, for whatever reason, and again, we have no right to judge their reason, if they feel offended, if they're not represented on that green, if they don't like it, they don't feel included, we, by law, must respect that. We can't say, "Well, we're going to give you a different date and a different season." If you think about that, that actually is government supporting a religion. It actually is supporting one group's display over another, and that's exactly the point that we need to avoid, and it's exactly why the framers of the Constitution wrote it the way they did. So this has nothing to do with, as one speaker said in the last meeting, taking Christ out of Christmas. This is just about use of town property, and what is appropriate, and what is inclusive. So again, this, one way or other, the town of Bethel is going to face a change. There's no way around it. This is not new, this has been brewing in the United States since the 1940s, 1950s. There are literally hundreds of different court cases, local, state, federal, Supreme Court, some go in favor of cultural displays, some go against it. So the rest of the world has finally caught up with Bethel, and after tonight, there is going to be the change, and I suspect some people are not going to like it, no matter which way this goes. But again, it's an either-or. We either allow the use of public property, or we don't allow the use of public property. There's no other way around. So with that, I'm going to move right into the main, oh, wait a minute, I do have, if you'll stick with me for a minute, there's a couple of things we have to add to the agenda. Make the motion to add under number five, consideration of adjustment to the 2019 water main project. Any discussion, any of those in favor?
Aye.
And number six, that carries under, number six, like the motion that we establish a special town, add to the agenda establishment of a special town meeting for the water main project. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those have been added to the agenda, those will be at the end.
Just one thing about the minutes, there's slight correction I'd like to make, but we can make it later.
Well, actually, we just-
We already did it, but-
Well, okay, well, was there a mistake on that? We might as well do it now.
Okay. In regards to Mr. Hillman's letter that Tony Boucher had read on his behalf, it's the minutes state, Bethel resident.
Oh, right.
It was Tony Boucher.
You know what, you're right, I read that last week and I forgot.
That should be corrected.
Okay, well, all right, we'll make a note of that.
I'll make a note of that.
Okay. All right. So item number one on your new business, consideration, actually, it's not all business, but consideration of recommendations from the Religious Holiday Display Committee.
I'd like to read the letter in a few minutes.
Okay.
I'm writing this letter to be placed in the Board of Selectmen minutes of tonight's meeting. I would like to begin by thanking the Religious Display Committee for accepting the task, considering the holiday display requirements for the town properties. It was not an easy task, your minutes indicate that you tried to show respect for everyone. Thank you very much for your time and effort in that. I've been thinking about this also. Being a lifelong resident of the town of Bethel, I have seen the town grow and become more diversified. When I grew up here, there were only four main churches in town. Today, friends and families have the opportunity to attend or are attending more than 12 religious groups in our community. This shows how diverse we have become. Would like to point out that Kresh has not always been at the P.T. Barnum Square. There, many years ago, the town used to have Christmas lights that went across Greenwood Avenue in the downtown section, and also over by the old First National, by the sycamore, that was, they had strong Christmas lights across the street. I respect everyone in Bethel for their religious preference, and those who have preference, we've become a mournful, caring, compassionate town. I'm proud to be and serve this town where I raised my family of the three generations. Therefore, I ask my fellow selectmen to vote that nothing pertaining to religious display signs or banners be placed on the town of Bethel's properties. So therefore, I'd like to make the motion. I moved that no religious or non-religious space be located at P.T. Barnum Square.
That's your motion?
And then, second, I'll give my reasons, or should I give my reasons first?
And that letter was from, that letter was from, I'm sorry?
Is it your letter?
That was my letter.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, I'll second that motion, and I want the audience to know that the three of us, 10 years ago, when we were first sworn into office, formed a pact that we would not play any parliamentary games, that every motion would be seconded, even if we planned to vote yes or no, so that had a full airing in the public and didn't die for lack of a second. So I'll second that motion and give, yield the floor to Rich.
Okay. As indicated by the voters of the Religious Display Committee, there is no fair way to determine who will have priority at P.T. Barnum Square over others, if, in fact, there are multiple suitors for the premises for the same period of time. The committee was also unable to come up with guidelines of whom or what should be allowed, other than grandfather in certain displays, which is unacceptable. The committee also did not suggest that any other locations for such displays, which may ease the burden of using P.T. Barnum Square, particularly for winter and holiday displays. If the Board of Selectmen allows one display, we will have to allow all, no matter how offensive of the display may be to the Board of Selectmen or the townspeople. Committee was unable to provide any guidelines as to what would be acceptable versus non-acceptable. The risk of exposing the town liability when one or more are denied access to set up their display at P.T. Barnum does not warrant the potential loss of tax barriers as a whole to defend any litigation for actions or non-actions by the Board of Selectmen. There are numerous private properties, both commercial and residential, which would allow for such displays without the necessity of the town government involvement. Until such time, standard as to what or what should not be allowed at P.T. Barnum, the timeframes of allowing such displays, how multiple individuals or organizations are guaranteed such positions, and such other situations, locations, and other displays are located. Town should refrain from granting privilege allowing any such displays at P.T. Barnum Square. This is probably my hardest decision as a selectman in the past 10 years that I've been on this board. So it's put a lot of thought into this motion that I made. I love this town, as I mentioned, I love this town, my family's here, my family, the formula's here. I hate to see any diversity in the town, and I think this could open up the potential of litigation if this happens. That's my motion.
The floor is open?
Yeah, let's reach to the issue here. First of all, this is my opinion, okay? It's not a religious display. It's a cultural, historic holiday event. Whether it's celebrating a Jewish tradition of having a yeshiva, a crush. But you know what I go back to is, I've been here since 76. Every year, there's always been a crush on it. Every year, as I tell you, it's a holiday season. It's a very festive, festive time. I mean, take a look at people, what they're doing, especially this, we take the Chamber of Commerce, they start something, but holiday events occurring, preparing the community for the holidays, for purchases or gifts. You have most of the marriages. Children are, various coral groups are coming out and singing. You see signs in the middle, "Happy Holidays," or "Christmas, peace, joy." It's the event itself that we're celebrating. It may have reached the start of a celebration of both an individual and the 2000, very long ago, that has happened. You look at the mall in Washington, D.C., I know one part of the mall's got a, throughout D.C., you'll find crushes. Yeah, Matt had the nail on the head, he was a Supreme Court supporter, this side, that side. Is that a right answer? No. There's not. And it just comes down to the season itself, we send each other cards, it's happy holidays, and we're pressuring each other. It doesn't, people are in the crush, you want to take that away? You say, "Is a crush offensive?" Is it a little more offensive? The atheists, they're signing last year, "Happy Holidays." I would agree with the atheists, but they stand, "Or, what? Are they playing into the season?" Yeah, and you know, this came up, the other, the last, or something. Who's going to make a decision on what should be on something itself? And I'm saying that that decision, whoever is going to be making it, should be the Board of Selectmen. Matthew is the administrator, Richard and myself are the legislative arm of the election. Somebody says, "Well, what about being feared soon?" I'm not afraid of that, and I have to say that, because, you know what, the cases are on both sides. I don't know how else to answer that, because, you know, it's been such a tradition since this country was formed, because the country was formed on Judeo-Christian values. My observations in general are, take a look at this whole thing, I think we're making a muck, a mole up there a little bit. Yep, I'm a, I should really, I'm a First Amendment, I'm a second. Unless the First Amendment says, "You can't do this," it doesn't say that. So, you know, there is going to be a group there that's going to say, "Well, I don't like that holiday season," as long as our message is in with the context of the season, then it's okay. And it's up to the three of us, or whoever's sitting on the board, the selectmen decides what is good and what is appropriate. You know, I've read some of these legal briefs, and as I said before, it's common, some are against it, some are for it. I think the solution is, is what I have to say, all of them, it's got to be the response of, of all the respect. I don't think it can be a special committee, because I praise, I really thank the special committee that got together, I really worked at this, we really come up with a conclusion. I think if you go forward, it's going to be the same, same old thing. The three of us have got to make that decision, period. Question comes down to, how many displays? Well, I'm going to say probably no more than three, okay? There's not enough room. I don't want to turn this into Times Square. That could happen. It may happen. But, you know, at the same time, I want to say, the P.T. Barnum holiday display has always been a very seasonal, and peaceful, and creative. I will say it will continue, but one thing, myself, sitting here as a selectman, I'm not going to allow this to be determined to mockery of our service, because for the most part, I want to say, the majority of citizens, you know, I don't know what is, 75%, 99%, 90%, I don't know what it is, but for the most part, I'll tell you, I've had people calling me up at home, "I'd like to come to Bethel, see yours," and that just tells me something, they like it, and we're not promoting a religion, okay? There's no funds being expended, so why not continue the season? So I'm going to vote for this. That's my statement.
You're going to vote for which is motion?
No, no, no. Against.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. I, I-
You're not knocking hard, makes you hurt.
It's so darn serious in here. You know, did your mom ever tell you to avoid religion and politics? We got both of them all wrapped up in the same thing. I want to thank Rich for the motion and for the work he's put into this, and yes, I think this is the hardest thing that any of us have done, because there's no easy way out, you know, there's, there's a difficult decision to be made. I am not going to support the motion, and I say that with a great deal of trepidation, but I'm going to rely on some optimism and some faith in my fellow man. I do have an alternative proposal that I'll put forth in a minute. Many, many towns have struggled with this across the United States, some have adopted inclusive displays, and some of them, quite frankly, have had problems. They've had vandalism, they've had controversy, they've had divisiveness in town. I think, as hard as it is, the safest solution is to just say, "All right, fill the town with crushes, and no one's, anything else, but put it on private property." But in response to our citizenry who has spoken up on this, I'm going to support an inclusive display, which I already admitted, so I will vote no on the motion, but I thank you sincerely for that. So I will vote no on the motion, but I thank you sincerely for that. That's not --
That's what it's about.
What's that?
That's what it's about.
It is. It is. So I'll try your minds, those in favor, stick with me, say yes.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
So that's officially on the record. Did you have an alternative? Or, I've got one prepared.
Why don't you go with yours and make your decision?
All right. I started working on a policy proposal and listening, and reading, listening to citizens' input and reading the letters that came in, reading the social media, and listening and talking to people face to face as well. So I started working on this a couple of weeks ago, so I'm going to read this, and at the end of it, I will make a motion. Policy proposal, proposed holiday religious slash nonreligious display policy. On background, town of Bethel has maintained a tradition dating back several decades of allowing a creche to be placed on public property, PT Barnum Square, during the holiday season. Anecdotally, the practice of placing a display on public lands as opposed to private dates back to the late 60s and early 70s, when a local patron donated the creche figurines to the town for placement on the town green. The town accepted the donation. Subsequently, the town stored the figurines within a taxpayer-owned facility and utilized taxpayer-paid staff to set up and dismantle the display each Christmas season. This practice was challenged by a group of concerned citizens in December of 2010 who contacted the Office of the First Selectmen questioning the replacement of a specific religious display on public property, as well as objecting to the town's de facto sponsorship, sponsorship as in quotes, of the display by virtue of the fact that the town owned the display, stored the display within a public facility, and utilized paid town staff in setting up a dismantling display each year. This, it was argued, amounted to a violation of the Establishment Clause of the U.S. Constitution. Upon review, the town attorney sustained the complaint and advised the first selectmen's office that the town should not own the display or dedicate any taxpayer resources to its maintenance. Subsequently, in 2011, the figurines were transferred, ownership of the figurines were transferred to the Bethel Chamber of Commerce. That organization assumed responsibility for storing the display and providing insurance coverage, as well as labor associated with setting up and dismantling the display. The chamber has since divorced itself from the issue and turned over the materials to a group of citizens associated with the Bethel United Methodist Church. This group has taken over ensuring, storing, setting up, and taking down the display, as well as creating a new display. In November 2018, the town was approached by a citizen who wished to place an alternative nonreligious display message on behalf of atheism. The town attorney was again consulted, who advised that inasmuch as a religious display had been allowed on public property, a nonreligious display could not legally be denied. The board of selectmen subsequently approved a temporary policy on November 26, which permitted both religious and nonreligious displays on town property for that season. In December 2018, the board of selectmen announced the formation of an ad hoc committee whose mission was to study the legal environment and formulate recommendations for a permanent policy to govern the placement of religious displays on public property. The committee was charged with addressing the following. One, determine if religious, if religious displays are to be allowed on public lands within the town. Two, if yes, establish a timeframe for display. Three, determine maximum size. Four, determine the number of displays that can be accommodated within space of PT Barnum Square. Five, ascertain if other locations with the town are suitable in addition to PT Barnum Square. Six, determine a method of space assignment or allocation if the number of displays exceeds the space available. The committee voted its recommendations on June 27, 2019. Committee recommendations. The committee addressed some, but not all, of the questions above. It recommended the following. One, holiday displays should continue to be allowed on PT Barnum Square. Two, displays in any given area not exceed one-third of the available space, with two-thirds being kept open for foot traffic and logistics. Three, displays that had been approved in the previous year, 2018, be automatically allowed to again be placed as they were the previous year, or grandfathered, but applications for newer displays be placed in a lottery to determine placement. Analysis. The committee appeared to have difficulty achieving consensus. Although it did support continuing the tradition of allowing holiday displays on the green, it did not consider locations other than PT Barnum Square. Further, it supported on a divided vote, a policy recommendation that was specifically noted by the town attorney as improper, which is grandfathering displays based on past history. Policy parameters. In reviewing the recommendations by the display committee and taking into account the legal parameters and analysis supplied by the town attorney, the board of selectmen must consider the following. Number one, a policy that allows for placement of religious displays on town property cannot be discriminatory. It is an all or none proposition. Two, if religious displays are to be permitted, nonreligious displays cannot be denied, nor edited, nor censored. Three, an allocation system must be provided that is fair and equitable to all applicants. Previously placed displays cannot be granted automatic placement on the basis of prior Policy proposal, so this is the proposal that I'll place on the record as a motion. In consideration of the factors above, the following is submitted as a motion. Number one, that displays for the holiday season will be permitted on PT Barnum Square between the Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving and January 7th of the following year. Two, applications will be accepted no earlier than October 1st or the first business day thereafter, and will be accepted no later than November 1st. Applications received after that date will not be considered. Three, applications for displays must be sponsored by a Bethel resident or organization. Applications from outside organizations or individuals not residing in the town of Bethel will not be considered. Four, applications must include proof of liability insurance, a physical rendering of the display showing accurate weights, measurements, and dimensions, and any wording or copy that would be visible to the public. Applications may be reviewed by the town building inspector and may be denied on the basis of public safety concerns. Five, the area reserved for display will not exceed one-third of the total open square footage of PT Barnum Square. Six, in the event that qualified applications are received that would exceed the total square footage allowed for displays, placement will be determined by lottery. All applications will be subject to lottery regardless of the display status of prior years. Seven, the board of selectmen will consider applications for approval upon advice from the Parks and Recreation Department that each application is met the requirements outlined above. That's the motion. Do a second. Second. Okay. Floor is open?
I have a question for the town attorney.
Yes.
I think it's on number three.
Do you have a copy of this, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. The application for display must be sponsored by a Bethel resident or organization. Application from outside organizations or individuals not residing in the town of Bethel will not be considered. Is that legal for us to do?
It's a good question. I would say in the context of everything that's gone on in the last couple of months, the answer is yes, it's okay. I think that, you know, you could get a challenge to it, if you get a challenge to it, you deal with it. But otherwise, you're going to get everybody and their brother here in Washington State who wants to make a vicious cause, really destroying the system, trying to sell. So for the time being, that's the situation.
Incidentally, that language was pulled from the temporary policy that we established last year, so it has been. I'll say that, go ahead.
No, that was --
Paul?
The only question I've got is, to you, number six, it says all applications will be subject to lottery regardless of display steps and other conditions.
Only if, only if it's too many.
Can I hear?
I'm sorry, it's my voice. Here. Under number six, it says all applications will be subject to lottery regardless of display status in prior years, and that sort of clarifies it.
Yeah.
Which is a case there's too many.
The qualification, yeah, clarification is that that would only kick in if there are too many, too many applications to be accommodated in one space.
Can I ask a question? Would I have to reapply?
No, I'm sorry. I have to stick with them. I'll speak with, be glad to speak with you afterwards.
No, I think we have to go forward, because all in all, this sort of represents what the people want, and you know, and I don't want to destroy the tradition of the town. Let's everybody back and know, which I said already in my statements. And I get calls from residents in Danbury, Reading, Kiva, you know what I mean? Of course, they were sort of anti-atheists, but be that as it may, as long as the message is appropriate, fine.
I want to add to that, number eight, that all applicants have to apply every year.
Okay. All right, that's, so there's no standing application, everybody, it has to be resubmitted? Yeah, just, okay, all right.
The annual application.
All right, so I'll rephrase, I'll just add, rephrase the motion to number eight, applications expire at the end of the season, and must, all applications must be resubmitted following that. Which is, that's, yeah, that's standard for park and rec use anyway, like that part, so. Yeah, right. Thank you for that.
We're not taking it, I'm sorry, we're not taking it.
I'll clarify for you afterwards. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, anything else, Rich? All right. I'll try your minds, those in favor of this motion, please, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I thank you both very much, and I want to again thank the folks who see you there again. Y'all are here, Tim. Oh, there you are, you can see you back there. Yes, Robin, thank you very much. Not an easy task. I did know that, I mentioned this to Holly after the last meeting, that we had a bunch of people on this committee who really never served in a government committee before, and you probably couldn't have picked a harder one to start out with, but I really thank you for the time and effort that you spent on that. It was not an easy task, so I appreciate that. So I'm going to move on to item number two. You're all welcome to stay unless you'll be bored out of your mind by the longer business that I've been on lately. Item number two is consideration of pedestrian walkway application for 77 South Street. I'm simply going to make a motion to detable this, because we do not have the paperwork for you to consider, how to disable it. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that will be carried over. Item number three, consideration of refunds.